Fountain Hills Town Council, I'll call the meeting to order, please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation, Pastor Steve Bergerson, welcome.
First prayer. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, bless these public servants of our town that they may do their work with wisdom, justice, and charity. Help them to use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote our common life. And move the citizens of Fountain Hills to serve their neighbors that we may have peace among ourselves and blessing to others. We ask all this of your son, our Savior. Amen.
Thank you, thanks Steve. Roll call please.
Mayor Schlum.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
All right, great, let's move into, we've got a proclamation to read in today, it's a one that works well with our town, in alignment with it. Recognizes the importance of getting to know your neighbor. Whereas meeting your neighbors can promote fellowship and goodwill during upcoming holiday season and throughout the year, and whereas good neighbors look out for one another and express concern in a variety of ways, which leads to an element of security and protection in neighborhoods, and whereas knowing your neighbors increases everyone's ability to share their time and resources, and whereas knowing your neighbors provides a strengthened sense of pride in your home and neighborhood, and whereas meeting your neighbor can accomplish in a myriad of ways such as simply introducing yourself when you see a neighbor outside, or by planning an informal neighborhood gathering, and whereas meeting your neighbors will nurture and enhance the wholesome sense of community that is so highly valued here in Fountain Hills. Now therefore, IJT Schlum do hereby proclaim the week of December 12th through the 18th, 2010 to be Meet Your Neighbor Week in the town of Fountain Hills, and hereby encourage all town residents to make a special effort to meet their neighbors and experience the many rewards that come from making neighborhoods even stronger, neighborhoods even stronger in our community. So, I'm looking forward to that, and I know just so happens our neighbor's having a neighborhood potluck or barbecue that weekend, so I'll be doing that, and then I have received a couple emails from folks on that proclamation that said, don't forget when the snowbirds get back to meet your neighbors again when they get here from the Midwest or wherever they may be visiting from, so, but that was a good point as well, but this obviously should be something we do on an ongoing basis because the more you get to know your neighbors, the more you get to know residents in Fountain Hills, the richer your life is, and I'm sure the same for them. Now we'll move into the call to the public, any speaker cards?
Yes Mayor, one speaker, Harris Deech.
Welcome, Mr. Deech.
Hello, hello Harris, as usual.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. This is about the garbage trash problem that seems to be infuriating most people. I suggest a compromise, right now you want to have one trash hauler, and everyone wants seven. I propose two. If one of those trash haulers go out of business, if only Allied wins the case. I suggest two to Allied and this other company with a three-year rate guarantee. That may quell the angry masses. Thank you very much, I've had my one minute of fame.
Thank you, Mr. Deech, thank you Harris. No one else? Great, move on to our consent agenda and request a motion to approve items one through four.
Second.
All right, roll call please.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Schlum.
Hi.
Councilmember Leger.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Elke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino.
Aye.
Mayor 7-0.
Thanks a bunch. Regular agenda item number one, consideration of resolution 2010-21, an amendment to the investment policy, updating investment options other than the local government investment pool, government LGIP-GOV. Julie.
Thank you Mayor, members of the council. The resolution before the council tonight authorizes an amendment to the town's existing investment policy. The policy that we currently have was adopted in March 2003, and it was certified by the Municipal Treasurers Association of the United States and Canada. At the direction of a previous council several years ago, the policy was informally amended to restrict investments only to those in the LGIP, which is the local government investment pool and government securities, which is where the town's idle funds have been since that time. The LGIP GOV invests only in those securities that are backed by the full faith and credit of the government. However, this pool is much like a money market in that the funds are liquid and available within 24 hours, which means that the interest rate or the return on that investment is very, very low. Currently, it's been less than one tenth of one percent. The goal with the proposed policy is to allow for a diversified portfolio through additional investment options, but remaining with full credit backing. The policy has been reviewed by both the town's financial advisor team, who will not be participating in any of the investments, and bond counsel from the town attorney's office. Currently, there's approximately $20 million in funds that are restricted and not programmed to be spent, such as fund balance, capital project money, development fees, et cetera. The plan is to offer and open up some of these investments to other bidders, including local bidders. When we are ready to go out for bid, that will come back to the council with council authorization to put out a bid. And in addition, we also have the option to piggyback on another municipality's RFP or request for proposal where they have gone out for competitive bids on investments. So we also plan to have this amended policy recertified by the Municipal Treasurers Association of the United States and Canada. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right, thank you very much. Any speaker cards on this item?
No sir.
All right, look for a motion first here on the item, and then we can ask questions.
Go move. Second.
All right, who's got comments, questions for Julie? Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, thank you. I apologize to Julie because I didn't get a chance to ask her some of these things before tonight. But, so I understand that even if we pay an advisor, which we don't do currently, we will still likely see a larger return.
Um Mayor, some councilmember Dickey, the goal of the investments is currently with the LGIP GOV, we invest our money there, we get a return back, and I imagine there's fees included in there that we don't see. This would work the same way, we would invest the money with these, we would get the earnings back on that, and I'm sure there would be fees built into that, I don't think there's anybody that does it for free. So, but again, the goal, if we can invest in the longer term as opposed to keeping it real liquid, that we would get a little bit better return on the money.
Thank you, and Mayor, Julie, some of the brokers out there, the financial consultants, operate on performance-based measures, so I would hope that maybe we would keep that in mind, probably when the time comes when we're looking at the RFP and the responses to that. A couple more things real quick, Mayor, will there be a change Julie, in the amount invested of this 23 or 24 million that we currently invest?
Um Mayor, some councilmember Dickey, the goal would be to invest some of the money that's in the pool, but not all of it. We would want to keep a lot of it, a good portion in there because it is liquid in the event that we needed it. But we would start out very cautiously and put out a few million dollars, but we would not, again, the goal is to diversify it and have a portfolio that is spread out a little bit more, but we wouldn't take it all, no.
Thank you, Mayor, a couple more things. On page four of 28, it says that the town finance director or designated would establish written procedures for the operation of the investment program. So is that something then that you would have to do, but you don't have those right now?
Um Mayor, some councilmember Dickey, yes, the first thing I want to do is have the policy certified by the Municipal Treasurers Association, and then when they certify it back, then we would go into the written procedures, yes.
And you, excuse me, and you would be doing that?
Yes.
Okay, and one more thing Mayor, and I don't think there's an answer for this yet, but when I looked at the list of the criteria, the parameters of how we would do some of these investments, I didn't see anything similar to what the state does, which is they do not invest in certain companies based on maybe where they are or some of their practices or things like that, and I wondered if that would be something, Andrew, that we might look into, or are we going to have parameters like that?
Um Mr. Mayor, councilmember Dickey, we can certainly look into that. If we find that there is some modified or amended language that would conform with what the state does, we'll come back to you with that.
Thank you, Mayor, you understand what I'm talking about? Okay, thank you.
Good, anyone else? Julie, on the, how quickly would this kick in if you were to get it through the municipal, you know, all these organizations that review it and put it into practice once you have the other items in alignment? When might you start to diversify the investments outside of the state pool?
Um Mayor Schlum, members of the council, depending again on how long it does take to get that certification back and then written right up the procedures, I would expect that sometime in the spring, we would be able to put out an RFP and again, come to the council first with the, for consideration to, we want to invest, you know, a million or two million, whatever it is, and get approval for that. So I would expect sometime in the spring.
And would all the funds and reserves be available under this new policy for that new type of investment?
Mayor Schlum, correct, as they are now, yes.
And then the diversification is an element of the strategy going forward, if it is to move forward?
Mayor Schlum, yes, that's correct, and again, we would be depending on the experts in that field to diversify it. I think we addressed that in the policy, that there's no single investment in one large investment, that it is diversified and balanced.
And there's been investments that municipalities have made in the past where they've gone bankrupt, and they've had large investments in one area, somewhat large. And how do we, is this going back to where we'll be at risk of doing something like that? Or how will the council know what degree of risk we're investing in? And who's going to advise us, or you, on those?
Um Mayor Schlum, members of the council, the policy limits and restricts investments to only those that are backed by the full faith and credit of the government. There will be no risky investments other than, I don't want to say other, there's no risky investments. The issue with the cities that lost a lot of money was the state treasures office, the LGIP, that made an investment that turned out to be fraudulent. So hopefully, you know, dealing with government securities only, which is all this policy allows, would prevent that. The goal of the policy is preservation of principle, not return. You know, we hope to get a little bit better than, less than one tenth of one percent, but that's through being able to invest out longer than just keeping it very liquid.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Mayor 7-0.
Thanks. Next item is discussion of staff's long-range sidewalk plan and sidewalk projects anticipated to be constructed during the next five years. Hi Randy.
Mayor, council, you had asked for a presentation on the long-range sidewalk plan and the sidewalks that we have anticipate constructing in the next five years. Back in 2007, staff had presented council with a long-range sidewalk plan, and staff is currently using that as a working document. The sidewalk plan shows proposed future sidewalk locations in the vicinity of schools and commercial areas and along arterial streets to complete gaps in the sidewalk system and to promote connectivity and safety. In our capital projects plan, we have two categories of sidewalks listed. One is our annual sidewalk program, and one is specifically allocated to the downtown area, the downtown sidewalk plan. The main criteria for inclusion of a sidewalk into our five-year capital improvement plan is connectivity to schools and or to parks, connectivity to the downtown commercial area, completing a gap in our sidewalk network, particularly along arterial and collector's streets, to maximize grant funds and other financial partners such as our neighboring communities, and where we're doing a road project, it only makes sense to do the sidewalk right next to the curb at that time. This map shows in red our sidewalk plan, in black our sidewalks that have been completed, and the highlighted nine projects are the projects that we anticipate for the next five-year CIP. They're numbered not in a priority order, but in a rough order that we anticipate that they will be completed in. Notice there's really three focus areas. One is routes to the schools in the north, one is routes into and in the downtown area in the central, and then Shea Boulevard in the south. So I will go to these in their numbered order. This is Fountain Hills sidewalk to a middle school. It was just recently bid by, the plans are complete, and it was recently bid by ADOT, and they got a really good bid on it, and it currently looks like we're not actually going to have to pay any money toward the construction of this project. It looks like it's going to be all federal funding in it. But this will actually complete the sidewalk from Fayette, which is where the sidewalk comes in from McDowell Mountain School, up to the middle school. This project, this goes along a street project, the Shea and Saguaro Improvement Project, and in that project, be adding the third lane westbound, west from Saguaro Boulevard to Technology. And so we have a sidewalk going along with that, as well as a sidewalk on the south side in that commercial area there. This project is currently at 80% design. Sidewalks are actually a small part of the project, and project's basically a 70-30 grant MAG RTP, which is half-cent sales tax, and then the rest from our CIP.
So just to be clear, that's not the, the two and a half to three and a half million dollars is not the sidewalk cost?
That's correct, yes. You see the estimated sidewalk cost is $170,000 out of that, so, a pretty minor part of the overall project. The third one-
Sorry Randy, does that, the sidewalk portion fall into the 70-30 MAG?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. What we had shown here is the total of the sidewalk cost, and that would be split 70-30 as well as all the rest of the project costs on that. The third project is along Saguaro Boulevard from El Lago down to Colony, and actually will extend to Hock. This project is at 95% design, and the 95% design was actually paid for by a grant from MAG. And so, we look at a couple of different options on this. One is to build it in pieces over a number of years. Second is to potentially include it in the package for the Saguaro Mill and Overlay project. And then the third, it would be to seek additional grant funding. We did have this designed to ADOT standards, such that if there is additional federal stimulus or other similar type programs, this would be a very shovel-ready project, if you will.
That's not an inexpensive one.
No, this is quite an expensive project, mainly because of the high slopes coming south from Colony. We'll need some big retaining walls there. This is the downtown sidewalks that need to be done. Each year, we budget money for sidewalks in the downtown area. If you recall, last year, we put in a couple of sidewalks crossing Avenue of the Fountains, and the year before that, we put in some sidewalks along Saguaro. And we'll be selecting on an annual basis which of these to design and construct. By the way, there is no grant funding for that project, and we don't really anticipate that we would be able to get any anywhere, but that has been a council priority, and so we are continuing on on that. This is Fountain Hills Boulevard sidewalk, it actually leads into the down, brings residential areas into the downtown area. This is a CMQ grant fund project for the construction. And it is budgeted in this year's to start the design of that. We have not started, we have not selected a consultant or done anything on it at this point yet. Project number six is along Palisades Boulevard, filling in the gaps between what developers have put in and what basically projects that were there prior to incorporation on their front edges. Project number seven is again a grant project, it would be a joint project with Scottsdale, going from, on the south side of Shea Boulevard, from 142nd Street to Eagle Mountain Parkway, leading the commercial area there at Eagle Mountain. And we need to start coordinating with the Scottsdale staff on this because it's going to be a lot more effort to get two cities to work on it together, so.
Why is it, does it say 11-foot wide path?
Uh, that's what Scottsdale has coming from the west to there.
I see.
And as you know, Scottsdale has an ordinance that allows bicycles on the sidewalk. And so they constructed from the west, as 11-foot wide, in intending to allow bicycles as well as pedestrians on there. Fountain Hills and most other cities don't have a similar ordinance to that, and so bicycles actually are not allowed to use the sidewalk unless it's specifically signed that way. So that actually accounts for the bike transfer area shown on this because we have a, well, we have a very narrow area between the retaining wall and the curb and guardrail on Shea Boulevard there, so we actually don't have room for bikes to go on the sidewalk. That die was cast about 10, 12 years ago by McDowell, so. Project number eight fills in the gap along the east side of Fountain Hills Boulevard between the existing sidewalks to the south and the project that's just about to get underway to the north, Fountain Hills Boulevard sidewalk to the middle school. So that'll complete a sidewalk on the east side of Fountain Hills Boulevard from the Catholic Church all the way up to the Omen property.
Randy, councilmember Cantino has a question.
Councilmember Cantino, I'm sorry.
A minute, um, on the, you talked about Scottsdale, now Scottsdale used asphalt.
They used asphalt on theirs coming all the way up with their bike lane. What would happen if we used asphalt on some of this, to cut our cost for to get them up right away?
Councilman Cantino, I'm not sure that there'll be a significant cut in the cost. The asphalt section that Scottsdale used is a rubberized asphalt section, and it does have a decorative edge pavement. Certainly for this one, we will want to consider that as an option for our section because we, you know, presuming Scottsdale wants to continue using that same section, we definitely should consider that as an, consider that for our section.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think I skipped any, but this one, this is a project going from Fort McDowell to Four Peaks Park and Four Peaks School and the Boys and Girls Club. Mainly, we are in the process of applying for a grant from ADOT for the Safe Routes to School funding. If we receive it, that would be 100% grant. If we don't, we'll go back to the drawing board and look at some other way, and other programs and that type of thing. But we've had good communication with Fort McDowell on this, and we're both excited about this. We think it'd be a really good project. I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of these projects or on our long-range sidewalk plan or anything else.
Good, thank you Randy, I don't think we're looking for any action on this one.
No Mayor.
All right, councilmember Cantino.
Randy, you were probably here when they built McDowell Mountain School, and going down Fayette, they had to put a sidewalk in, and how they put the sidewalk in, do you remember that?
Uh Mayor, councilman Cantino, that sidewalk actually predates the town and certainly predates me.
Okay, they, what they did is, they, everybody donated money for one section of sidewalk all the way down. And I'm just wondering with the number four asphalt, or number four with the sidewalks on Avenue of the Fountain where we can't seem to get the connected down there, would that be a possibility that we could do to, again, speed this up? I mean, we got the sidewalk done and nothing flat, because everybody donated a section.
Uh Mayor, councilman Cantino, that certainly is a possibility if the council would like to, um-
I mean, it's such a short strip.
Yeah. If the council would like to consider a, donate to a sidewalk fund or something like that, yeah, we'd certainly open to that. I, you know, I don't know that with the town's funding today versus no funding and actually questionable jurisdiction from the road district back in that time, whether that would, you know, whether citizens would be as, um-
Open?
Open to that, to that type of thing, yeah.
Well, it's just a suggestion.
And, you know, we're all in favor of using volunteers and donations for whatever we can get.
And any other questions, comments for Randy or staff on the sidewalks planning, councilmember Hanson?
Thank you Mayor. On number six Randy, there's a little section that is, it's actually future sidewalk as opposed to proposed sidewalk. It's kind of on the same block where Bashes is.
Yeah.
And it just seems like that one should maybe be moved up more so than the ones on the north side. I mean, I frequently see people walking down that dirt stretch. And I mean, that's, you know, there's more commercial on that side of the street, and it would seem to, you know, be a good idea to get that one finished up before the north side. Because right now, it's in a secondary position to the north side.
Mayor, councilman Hanson, we can certainly do that. The reason we hadn't shown it at this point is because, you know, number one, this is a ways out yet, and number two, if Bashes, you know, we've actually seen a concept plan for expanding their site to that area. If they actually move into that, we don't want to preclude them doing that. And we don't want us to say, you know, we're going to do this and spend our money on it rather than you do it. But yes, I would absolutely agree with you that, you know, we should consider that in this project unless Bashes or the developer of that center is moving forward with something. Because that is a sidewalk segment that we do, we do get complaints on that because a lot of people apparently do walk on that, and you can tell from the way it's trodden down that they do. The problem is though, that whatever we build there is going to be a throwaway for when that is built on, so. That's the balancing act.
Yeah, well, and then we have that in other areas too, because for the sidewalks along Fountain Hills Boulevard, I mean, if there's any even minor improvements to Fountain Hills Boulevard, and here we're, you know, putting in this long stretch of sidewalk, and, you know, that could conceivably be a throwaway too. And then on number four, if we look at the one that there's, and it's proposed sidewalk, that runs from the library community, the library museum, down to Verdi River, and, you know, kind of going across that empty lot, and I kind of wondered about the rationale of that because there, again, if something is done on that property, is that site consistent with, you know, an easement or something that belongs to the town? And then the same with the one that goes down off of, at the avenue down into Fountain Park. And I just wondered if that location is, if that was taken into consideration, you know, any planning for that intersection and to make sure that that sidewalk location was strategically placed and was consistent with, you know, the proposed site plan for that area. So some of these were like, you know, maybe we need to have, you know, more information or, and I know it's not planned for right now- or, and I know it's not planned for right now, but those were some that just kind of jumped out.
Mayor, Councilwoman Hanson, you know, on number four, you know, certainly we want to look at maximizing our resources by letting developers do the projects, the developer on their frontage, and then we spend our money on the frontages that aren't going to get built by developers, yes. Whenever that's possible, we would really like to do that, and so that's why, it's one of the reasons that we haven't put together, okay, we're going to do this piece this year and this piece the next year and that type of thing, because it would be nice if all the vacant lots were built by developers.
Yeah, but I mean, and just when you watch people on a daily basis, and there are some areas that are just, you know, begging to have, you know, like that one by Cape Bueno that has the sidewalk that goes into a wrought iron gate, or, you know, it's like, you know, and you see people leave the sidewalk, and then they walk out into the street, and it's, that's not a good situation.
Mayor, Councilwoman, I certainly agree.
I think when you get out like four, when it's 2015 and 16, some of those reds should probably be like orange or, you know, more contemplated ideas, like Councilmember Hanson is saying, the ones that cross the park and the one that crosses from the library down into Verdi River, Paul Norton Parkway. Good, thank you.
One more?
Yes.
Mayor, on number five, Randy, the one on Fountain Hills Boulevard, is that, could that grant be used somewhere else, or is that committed to that? Is that site-specific?
Mayor, Councilman, I might want to add one more thing on number four. We don't actually anticipate that we will complete all the, you know, unless developers build a subsizable section of number four, we won't actually complete it within the five-year period, so.
Okay, well, when they were bold red as opposed to skinny red, I thought that made them more of a sure thing.
The bold reds are ones we actually have designated a project for, but again, this project will go not only in the five years, but further on, you know, continue on the annual basis further on after that.
So on five, are the dollars set for that one site along Fountain Hills Boulevard?
Okay, going back to, going back to five, the grants we have are all specifically tied to a specific project, and have gone through various committee actions and that type of thing.
So we couldn't say, oops, we'd rather use that money somewhere else?
No, we really couldn't.
That means we'll be going, consistently going after grant monies for this type of thing, or, I mean, Councilmember Hanson, do you want to talk about what you're thinking right now as far as for staff to keep their eyes open for grant money?
I think in the report, it was, it said what Randy referred to in 2007, that the council's consensus at that time was that the sidewalk plan map should be a staff-working document rather than have the constraints of an adopted document, since the council reviews it before it goes out to bid or anything. But my only concern with that is that it seems like we run the risk of getting too far along, and so like this very thing that, you know, if there's a grant that's been applied for, and it's not part of a council-approved plan, it's just going by the staff's working document, that by the time that it does come to the council, we're pretty well committed to that. So that's one of the things that I'm just kind of, have been grappling with over the last couple of years, that it seems like when we get them, they're already kind of set in stone, even though they haven't been approved yet, they've just gone off this working plan.
So, and I know, obviously, it's kind of the chicken and the egg, you may not get the grant if you don't plan far enough ahead to get the actual grant, but you're right, if you're going to get a grant, it's going to be hard to turn the grant away and not do a project. You need to really make sure you want to do a project before you go after the grant.
That's why it seemed good to, you know, maybe kind of go back to this plan and say, you know, since it's been since 2007 and go, is this, are we still really looking at this type of a format?
And then, yeah, I think that's worthwhile. How about, we went to this plan probably so that we could plan out a little further ahead and grab grants whenever, you know, they were available. Do you have thoughts on that, Randy, as far as the process that Councilmember Hanson brought up?
Mayor, yes, and actually, one of the things we wanted to do tonight was to show you projects that are coming up and projects, you know, not only that have grant funding already to them, but projects that we think we would like to submit grant applications on over the next few years, and we had mentioned those in the, up in the box of the ones that we, you know, we would like to submit grant applications for. If you, if the council has, says, you know, no, we don't want to do this type of project, we want to do more of that type of project, and we would like you to pursue grants in that type of area, you know, that's absolutely what we would do.
Mayor, I think you hear comments that sometimes it seems like sidewalks are going in places where you really don't see people walking, you know, like out on Shea, you know, not too many people stroll out on Shea with the sound cars roaring past them. And then we have other areas where we do see people walking in the street. So maybe it's, you know, having the sensitivity more of, let's make sure we get the sidewalks where the people are walking before we have the ones that, yes, someday we want to have all this connectivity in town.
So are there areas that you're thinking right now aren't reflective of areas that are, where people are walking and we don't have a plan?
Well, I think, just priority-wise, I think I'm concentrating more in the downtown area.
So moving item four up earlier, obviously, there's other elements going to that, the grants in particular, but-
Mayor, Councilwoman Hanson, I was not a part of the decision on how much we should put forward in annual budgets, basically on an annual basis. If you think that's not enough, I mean, we will look at larger projects and accomplishing that faster.
The downtown, meaning thirty thousand annually?
Sure.
Making, moving more funds into that area, okay. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, thank you. So Kathy, on number four, is the, Seaw, Seaworth says La Montana and Parkview, is that, where's the place you were just talking about with the gate? Is that on La Montana?
That's right, Parkview and La Montana. Seaworth makes that little curve around the corner.
Okay, so let's sort of go in northern. So Mayor, would, Randy, would you want people to just like make little suggestions of things that we've actually seen around town? I know, I understand what you said about the Bashes thing, that, I mean, that is a definite one, but I also can see what you're saying about not trying to do something there if it was going to be developed, and plus, at least with the dirt, you can walk safely there. But if it's something like this, I mean, are you looking for specific changes, which kind of goes along with, when you do apply for grants, do you, are there parameters where you think you have a better chance to get the grant, and maybe that's why you move forward? So I'm trying to figure out a way to wheedle through this a little bit to help you on the next time you go for a grant, and then to make us give you our input.
Mayor, Councilwoman Dickey, you know, I mean, the grants we've pursued, and there may be additional ones that we're not even aware of, or ones that come up, you know, that have, you know, opened up their criteria to allow these type of projects that aren't there, you know, it's a moving target every year. But I guess I would say, you know, in relationship, Councilwoman Hanson, to the project you mentioned, we actually, I guess, twice in the last five years, I've had a developer contact me about building on that, on that site, and haven't ever gone any farther than that, but that's one reason we haven't done anything on that, on the staff standpoint from, at this point, because it looked like it was going to get developed and looked like it might be built by somebody else with somebody else's money. But I would absolutely agree with you, I mean, that's the, that's the one remaining piece along La Montana that would fill that gap really, really well.
Councilmember Brown? Our vice mayor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, on specifically the Boschia property, have we considered using an asphalt opposed to a concrete sidewalk for, we know it's going to be a throwaway sometime in the near future, well, sometime in the future. Have we looked at using something other than concrete, a less expensive surface?
Mayor, Councilwoman Brown, you know, we, if we build that sidewalk prior to a developer, you know, I think that would be a very, very good option for that, would be an asphalt sidewalk there, recognizing it's going to be a throwaway.
And that area is heavily traveled, there's no question about it, so that's a suggestion.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Hey, thanks a bunch for any of the, these visual displays are very helpful.
Really good.
Really well done. Thanks again. Next item, council discussion direction to the town manager. Anyone, do we, do we give Rick work to do before, when he gets back? I don't think so. Summary of council requests and report on recent activities, anything, Julie, you want to share?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. All right, look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
No seconds? Just kidding. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Go A is you.